I'd like to call and order the October meeting of Suffolk City School Board and welcome all of you to our new meeting place. I hope you're gonna have a nice enjoyable meeting today with us. Appreciate your being here this time. I'd like to, uh, let's see what I, I'd like to ask Sidney Johnson from Kings Fork High School to come to the podium to give us the pledge of allegiance. Please Sidney, come forward.
I'm pleased to stand for this pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you Sidney. We'll see you in a little bit, right? We're gonna be seeing you again?
Yes.
You can tell us more about you when you come back up the next time, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. You can have certification of the closed meeting, please.
Resolution of certification of the closed meeting of October 9th, 2014 pursuant to section 2.2 dash 3712 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended.
Thank you at this time. We have us public speakers on agenda topics. Do we have any appearances? Okay, we'll ask the superintendent to give his reports. Dr. Whitney?
Thank you and good evening everyone. I'm gonna call to the podium Ms. Beth Ann Bretsch, our Public Information Officer. Ms. Bretsch?
Good evening. Each month we take this opportunity to share with you and our viewing audience at home, some of the great things that are happening each and every day in our schools and some of the outstanding achievements of our students and our staff. Tonight's first good news report will focus on a sportsmanship award being presented to Kings Fork High School by the Virginia High School League. I'd like to call up now Principal Dr. Stinette Byrd and Tom Dolan, Assistant Executive Director of the Virginia High School League.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight for this award. The Claudia Dotson Sportsmanship Ethics and Integrity Award is named for a pioneer in high school athletics. Claudia was a VHSL Assistant Director for 31 years and her passion was for high school opportunities for competition for all and it was only surpassed by her desire to, for fair and sportsmanlike competition. Schools qualify for this consideration based on a self-assessment system which awards points and this sportsmanship program is then verified through documentation and implementation of those programs that they put together. It's an all-encompassing program that requires every member of the school family to be involved. That's the students, the adult parents, the student parents, the coaches, the players, and the administration. Of the 315 member VHSL schools, 44 schools, which is a record this year, achieved this award. That is still only 14% of the VHSL member schools. I'm honored to be here tonight to present for the third time the Claudia Dotson Sportsmanship Ethics and Integrity Award to Kings Fork High School.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dolan, for this award. This is something that we certainly take great pride in. Each, at the start of each year and at the start of each season, I actually go out and speak to each of the individual teams and I let them know that, you know, their coaches are focused on winning and things of that nature. However, it's very important to me that we continue to receive this award. So, I make that known to all of the students personally, but I would like to introduce Ms. Kelly Anon, who is a teacher at Kings Fork High School, and she has been instrumental in helping us to achieve this award by developing a guideline notebook that we have followed. So she'll tell you a little bit about that at this time.
Good evening. My name's Kelly and I'm a teacher at Kings Fork High School and a temporarily retired coach. I've assisted Coach Jesse in developing a sportsmanship guideline book and I'm also responsible for collecting the data and the application submission for this award. I'm extremely proud and excited to be here for the presentation of our third sportsmanship award. As a coach, I knew what steps I personally had taken to ensure the teams that I work with represented our school and themselves appropriately as athletes. It wasn't until Coach Jesse asked me to head up this application process that I found out how amazing our administrators, coaches, and athletes really are. Sometimes we got so caught up in the scores and the stats and the wins and the losses that we forget just how much effort goes into helping the students grow not only as athletes but as individuals. Every year this application process gets a little easier as I see a constant increase in initiative on the parts of our coaches and administrators to guide students in the direction of sportsmanlike behavior. Administrators have set sportsmanship guidelines for our athletic program and the coaches implement them in addition to their own expectations for their players. As our athletes have been nothing, I'm sorry, and our athletes have been nothing less than impressive in meeting these requirements. At the end of each season, our sportsmanship program allot one sportsmanship award to each team. Coaches choose the recipient of this award and present trophies at the end of season banquet. This past year nearly every coach expressed to me how difficult it was to choose one specific athlete to receive the award as the acts of sportsmanship and pride on our Bulldog teams have become commonplace. As each season passes, it seems our athletes view sportsmanlike conduct less of a requirement to be met or a rule to follow and it seems they simply see it as how the Bulldog plays the game. I feel confident that the Bulldogs will be here again this time next year to accept this award for the fourth time and in the spirit of good sportsmanship, I hope that next year I can be here to watch this award be presented to the Bulldogs and the Warriors and the Cavaliers as a show of solidarity among Suffolk Public Schools. I'd like to thank VHSL and the school board for taking time to recognize this important accomplishment of our coaches and athletes. And finally, it's my pleasure to introduce one of our Bulldog athletes who helped set the standard for sportsmanship, Ms. Sidney Johnson.
Today, the topic of my speech is sportsmanship. Sportsmanship means behavior that is fair, honest, and polite in a game or sports competition. A sportsman is a person who can take the loss or defeat without complaint, or a victory without gloating, and who treats his or her opponents with fairness, generosity, and courtesy. This is a quality which we need at the time when we are both winning or losing the game. It's a display of mutual respect for opponents and officials. It creates the kind of positive atmosphere that will make it possible for every participant to feel proud of their own efforts and results, no matter the scoreboard, and acknowledge the efforts of their treatments, I mean, of their teammates, opponents, and referees. And this is what we all need in every walk of life. I'm very proud of this award because I know personally how hard it is to show sportsmanship, especially if you have lost or are losing. Being able to be a good sportsman or a good sportsman, win or lose, is a great quality to have. I'm very proud of my school for being able to always display that quality. In the words of Simon Muzen, victory is remembered for at least two decades, and act of good sportsmanship is remembered a lifetime. Thanks, Sidney.
Sidney, thank you for being such a great support for your school and the school system. Thank you very much for being here tonight.
We also did bring a banner and I'd ask Sidney if she would help hold this up for us and this will go in the gym at the, at the school.
Wow. Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Any questions, comments by board members?
I want you all to be sure that all of us are there proud of you and what you've done and it's just wonderful to see our students in this capacity. We're very proud of you.
Thank you.
Is your family here?
Yeah, my mom.
Thank you. Thank you again. Our second good news report focuses on recognition from the United Way of Southampton Roads for the continued campaign support from the division's employees and our students. Win Winslow from the United Way will explain a little further.
Good evening Chairman DeBrasky, Vice Chairman Copeland, Superintendent Whitney, members of the board. My name is Win Winslow. I'm the Western Tidewater Relationship Manager for United Way of Southampton Roads, John Yates High School class of 1980. So it's good to be here tonight with you all. I'm here tonight to thank you for your participation in our community. As a community, we depend on you to teach our children and we teach them, and to teach them not just the ABCs, but what it means to be a good citizen. And as the prior presentation shows, you're doing a great job of that. Clearly, you're leading by example. Last year, Suffolk Public School employees raised over $27,000 for United Way of Southampton Roads and the students, well, the students raised over $13,000 for a total of over $41,000. Over the last five years, Suffolk Public Schools, employees, and students have raised for this community over $298,000. You joined with others in Southampton Roads to make good things happen. Here's what's happening in Western Tidewater. 5,229 children and families received school tutoring, childcare, and programs to reinforce positive behaviors. 31,663 neighbors were rescued during emergencies such as abuse and homelessness. 1.6 million meals were distributed to the hungry and 2,473 disabled elderly and sick received health, service, education, and support. So, on behalf of a grateful community, we brought you this plaque to recognize your generosity and to say thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have to say Beth Ann has run your campaign for as long as I can remember and it's a delight to work with her every year. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, as you can see under the superintendent's report, is school improvement plans. At our last meeting, I do believe, board members, you had asked that we present not only those schools, schools that were accredited with warning, but also what are we doing as a division to address the needs of our students. I'm gonna ask our Deputy Superintendent, Ms. Jaclyn Chavis, to come to the podium and begin to share what we're doing as a system to assist and serve as a resource to those schools accredited with warning, but schools in general. Jackie Chavis will present this along with Doug Doye, the Director of Secondary Leadership, and Ms. Pamela Connor, the Director of Elementary Leadership. Ms. Chavis?
Good evening. I'm sorry. Good evening. As Dr. Whitney mentioned, we have really become more laser-like and I focused this year and developed a plan that really, what we believe provide the supports our schools need to continue to progress and improve. And what we'll share with you tonight will be what we have designed as a, at the district level to improve student achievement across the district. These would be our areas of focus this year. The first one, differentiated levels of support, I'll speak with you about that. The middle three, instructional planning and delivery, professional knowledge, and assessing for and of learning, really align with the state's performance standards as it relates to evaluating teachers and principals. And so we've aligned our work this year more closely with those standards. If we look again at differentiated levels of support, we have tiered our schools to be able to provide more intensive services to those that are in need of the most support. We've done that based on the number of years that a school may have been in improvement status or whether or not they have met the, all the required federal annual measurable objectives. And so that tiering will allow us then to focus on those schools that need that more intensive support and give flexibility to those schools who have proven year after year consistently to meet the standards and to have full accreditation. That differentiated support will look from the standpoint of professional development, the needs of the teachers and needs of the students, increasing that professional development. This year we have, yesterday was our very first early release day and that was at the request of the committee of those who planned the calendar for this year because they wanted more time to spend on collaborating as a school for additional professional development to help improve in the areas that are needed. Instructional planning and delivery, you've heard us talk before about aligning our standards and our work with the written, taught, and tested curriculum. And that simply means that the lesson planning that happens, the delivery, as well as any assessing that needs to happen to make sure students have mastered the material. And so we're continuing that work this year. We believe that last year, the work with the State Department has helped to get us, especially in math, when you look at those results, those results, and we continue to want to build on those. Professional, professional knowledge would be building the capacity of staff by way of the content as well as delivery. And then assessing for and of learning, pre-testing on the teacher's part to see what the students already know, and then measuring and aligning their instruction with that so that at the end, to get those outcomes to see that they truly have mastered the material. And finally, by way of accountability, in that area, we're looking at increased monitoring of the schools and the classrooms and really revisiting the instructional non-negotiables that we established last year and year before to make sure that they are in alignment and those things are happening in the classroom. Mr. Doye and Mrs. Con, Mrs. Connor will share with you more specifics in each of these areas and the work that they're doing with the specialists and supervisors.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The first item, instructional planning and delivery, it's not a complete list and it's important to understand, and this is, has been presented in the past, that our teachers, our supervisors, specialists, administrators are working together, always collaborating on putting out the best product or instructing students based on their needs. This is just a brief list, some highlights of some items perhaps that we haven't presented in the past. First, which has been talked about, is the Virginia Department of Education. We do collaborate with the VDOE, not just with the resources they provide, the practice items, but also with the training. We've had training in Suffolk and also off campus related to the written, taught, and tested, and recently with several administrators on providing appropriate feedback to teachers on their instruction. We also go outside of the system. Informally and formally, we do discuss with other systems, their practices, their materials such as curriculum guides, observation tools, and other items. One formal organization, and I'll give a few examples for this slide, is a TCTM, which is the Tidewater Council of Teachers of Mathematics. It's made up of regional math teachers and they come together to work on lessons as well as practice items and assessment items that they use. And again, they collaborate and they share within the region. Colleges and universities are listed here because we've worked with a number of universities and colleges within the area. Polycamp, for example, assisted with professional development for all high school math teachers earlier this school year. We constantly work with UVA and William &amp; Mary on a number of projects related to literacy and mathematics. Also listed organizations, because we have so many organizations, you couldn't make a list here, businesses that work with our students, as well as, one example would be the Enhancement River Preservation Alliance, and they provide experiences related to the oyster restoration for all of our seventh grade students in the area of life science. That's one example of an organization that we work with or collaborate with. Our curriculum guides, each year they are revised and updated, but in many areas this year, they took over a major overhaul to include unpacking items and exercises within those instruments. Also progression charts and also sample questions are included within the curriculum guides. The parent resource guides, we have for a number of years and we tweak and revise each, each year where we provide information to parents so that they can help their students at home. In many cases, in terms of mathematics, there are videos, links to videos that can be used for tutoring their children at home. But these resource guides start with a list of SOLs and pacing information at the beginning of the year, and it also contains other sample and practice activities along with links to videos as mentioned before. One other item listed on this slide is the Algebra Readiness Project, which is primarily a middle school math project, which consists of additional help for middle school students. Students are tested and then found to need a certain area as far as remediation, and then we add additional staff, sometimes part-time, sometimes retired math teachers, to help with the algebra readiness. So that, that's contained within our middle schools. In terms of professional knowledge or building capacity, as mentioned already, the alignment to increase the rigor of the written, taught, and tested, making sure that what we, what we plan, what we teach, what we test is to the level of the standard. That has been an ongoing item for the past, this year and the past school year. Using data to inform instruction and scheduling and flexible grouping, that's a key piece and that's been an ongoing item. Our supervisors and specialists have been heavy working with teachers at the beginning of the year, analyzing data from the previous school year as we move into this year with the planning of their lessons. Guided math has been an item that we've spent a good deal of time on the past two years at the elementary and middle school level through professional development and book talks so that math groups, outside of the whole group instruction, small groups are also created within the classrooms based on data. And the last item on this slide is literacy and power tools. That's simply a series of reading strategies before, during, and after reading, and that, that is also a professional development item that we have been working on. The last slide under professional knowledge or building capacity are some topics that have been ongoing. First with PD, providing PD to teachers, professional development on meaningful student engagement, providing meaningful feedback to students, which is key with the writing and building better writers by providing the feedback from the teachers to the students. So that's been one piece of our professional development. And then last, the incentive program has a professional development component to it. And basically, it's an incentive based on growth. The English at the middle school level and the math at the secondary level are involved in pre and post-testing their students. The post-test would come later during the third nine weeks. And they would receive professional development to, obviously, as they teach the students, they're gonna help grow those students when we take the post-test. And there's an incentive based on their growth as measured through their SMART goals. And again, there is ongoing PD as part of that program.
Good evening. I'm going to borrow Dr. Byrd's term, coaches are focused on winning and we as coaches, working with teachers and students, we're gonna win. We're gonna hang our banner this year. So, I'm here to address assessing for, for, and of learning and accountability. As we have, this is our second year where we're implementing our math assessments. We're giving those three times a year. That helps to, to the teachers and the schools to give a true focus on individual pacing, how students are doing individually in both math and reading. This year, we've done a reduction of state and local assessments. We've actually reduced our local benchmarks by 40%, which is approximately 200 tests are being reduced this year. Not only are we reducing the test, we're realigning our benchmarks to include the rigor and the connection that needs to happen for students. The test preparation, in English and math, we've included the TEIs, which is the Technology Enhanced Items, giving students an opportunity to really apply their learning. It's not just multiple choice, they're actually able to manipulate and have interaction with answering questions and ensuring that their learning is taking place. And then to support teachers with formative assessments, with the reduction of the summative and the formal, the benchmark assessments, teachers are now focused on checking for understanding, making sure the students are getting the information before they move forward so that our pacing can be aligned and learning takes place. Accountability is another piece to that. We've restructured our academic reviews this year. All schools have turned in their school improvement plans and we start next week with our initial school improvement meetings with the principals. From that, we're going to listen to their needs. Each, each year, and this year again, there is a school administration instructional team member that is assigned to the individual schools that work on their leadership team. So we're gonna be moving forward, as Mrs. Chavis shared, tiering our academic reviews based on the needs of the schools and what they need. We're gonna, we've revised our observation tools and our feedback form. We're working directly with the VDOE, the Virginia's Department of Education, working at looking at joint observations. The State Department is coming in with our schools and improvement and the focus schools to actually support the observation tool itself. We have some principals involved with CERN at William &amp; Mary, which is helping them to give quality feedback to teachers. The instructional team, both supervisors and specialists are in classrooms, giving direct feedback to teachers. In order to improve instruction, we need to be able to have meaningful feedback and consistent conversations with teachers and principals on how to move instruction. And then quality feedback again to schools, making sure that principals are holding teachers accountable, that we're holding the principals accountable. The alignment with the state expectations, our observation rubric has actually been aligned with our rubric from the state for the taught, the tested, taught, the written, taught, and tested curriculum, where our observations are gonna be very in sync with that. And we're gonna increase the amount of time that we're in the classroom. The only way we can observe classrooms and know what's going on is to be in them. So our coaches are there, working directly with teachers, and as I said, we're gonna be hanging that banner this year with, with a successful moment.
The superintendent, each, each week, checks with us to see exactly what we're doing differently this year to make sure that we move forward with our schools. And so what we wanted to share with you tonight was our efforts at the district level to just do that, that our expectations of the schools are no different of what the superintendent expects of us, to be able to be in the schools, providing that support, and that it looks differently from what we've done in the past. You've heard some things that we did do last year. We believe that we did make the gains that we made in math because of the alignment that we talked about. We believe that the closer monitoring of the classrooms with principals, in lieu of us being, going out to do the observations as we did last year, based on our input and other work with teachers. The principals will be saying to us, when they come in for their school improvement plans and their academic reviews, here is what I have been seeing, here's where I want you to go, so that they too are taking ownership of this process. And so the goal is that we're all in this, working to improve our schools. We take it very seriously and as Mrs. Connor said, we believe that the work we started, we're gonna continue that and you'll see a difference in, in the performance. Any questions?
Questions concerned, comments by board members? No. I'd like to make a comment then if I could. How many, how have you redistributed your central office curriculum and instructional supervisors to the schools that are in special need? How have you realigned their work?
We have and, and actually just yesterday, at one of our instructional meetings, monthly meetings, we talked about the tiered services that I mentioned two years ago. That we will first begin with the three schools, Lakeland High School, Kings Fork High School, and Elephants Fork Elementary School, because they're at a different place in accountability process. The three highs, the two high schools have been an improvement longer than any of the other schools. And this year, Elephants Fork being a focus school, because they're titled when they have that focus school title and that they've also been an improvement and have not met certain AMOs. And so that is where we're beginning with those services, with those schools being, receiving more services from us, meaning that in the areas of math, in particular for the two high schools, and the graduation index that's slightly dipped, that's where the focus would be at those two high schools. And so the entire math department would be working more closely with those in the buildings and the principals there. Those and other content areas have also been told that the process of learning, while math may not be their specialty, the process and the concepts that should be taught and good teaching, they can assist in that method also. The next level of support would be to those schools that may be in their first, we had four schools last year that came up as first year in mourning. That would be the next level along with those that in their second year. So it begins with those who've been in school improvement longer and then tier down to those who have consistently shown improvement over time. And our efforts will be focused on those first two tiers.
Dr. Whitney, do you have something?
Yes, I just wanted to add, when we talk about support for the schools, I think it's important to also share that each school has a central office staff member assigned to that school to work as a liaison. Ms. Chavis, can you talk a little bit about that as to what their role is, how involved they are, and what, what type of support they offer the schools?
Each of the instructional staff members will then, they actually sit on the school improvement team or the leadership team in each of the schools. They're there to really advocate on behalf of this principal and the schools. When they come back and we have our meetings or they talk with, with us about the needs of the building, that comes from our building rep. So they're directly working in unison with the schools. As the school improvement plans were developed, the building liaisons were there to provide that support to them as well. And so it's not as much as serving in a supervisory role of what's happening on those leadership teams, as it is to advocate and be a support to those teams because they're there. teams, as it is to advocate and be of support to those teams, because they're there, hearing the conversations of the teachers and the principals, and knowing what the needs are and the areas of concern in the buildings. And so they then come back, and then we align the resources and tier the support based on that feedback.
Ms. Chavis, am I correct when I ask you that the state did not send any representative to Elephant Fork because they, they gave us the opportunities since we had a plan of our own?
Last, last school year, you mean last year or the year that we're currently, last school year, we did have a state person to come in to work with all the schools that were in improvement at that time. And what they did was to be involved in our academic review process, which was modeled after the state. We actually had a separate contractor that we worked closely with and paid to go into Elephant Fork, to do observations as well and give us feedback beyond what the state did. This year, with Elephant Fork being a focus school, they will have someone that will come in to do maybe two or three times during the school year with observations, but we will be responsible for continuing to provide those academic reviews, give feedback to the principal, on the feedback the principal's giving to the teachers. So there was additional support that we actually contracted for, for Elephant Fork last year that was beyond what the state could offer us.
Any other questions by board members? Thank you, Ms. Chavis.
Yes, sir.
And next, we're going to have, I'm sorry. Next, we're going to have a principal from three schools present next. But I, I will say this to you, as they present, one of the things that we've asked them to do is to present, what are they doing differently this year? Because we recognize that if we continue to do what we've always done, we're going to get the same results. So looking at the data, looking at where students fell short, looking at the instructional program, looking at the resources perhaps, they're going to share with you what they're going to do differently. And I think first on the list is Dr. Stinnet Bird, principal of Kings Fork High School.
All right, greetings, Dr. Dubrasky, members of the school board and members of the school community. My name is Stinnet Bird, and I'm the proud principal at Kings Fork High School. All right, all the you will see on this slide, we had a slight decrease in two of our content areas. We are very proud. All right, greetings, Dr. Dubrasky, members of the school board and members of the school community. My name is Stinnet Bird, and I'm the proud principal at Kings Fork High School. All right, all the you will see on this slide, we had a slight decrease in two of our content areas. We are very proud at the amount of growth that we have shown in our focus area of mathematics. You can see here from this slide that in the area of mathematics, we have increased 16 percentage points. And in later slides, I will share with you some of the things that we believe contributed to this growth, as well as highlight the new initiatives that we believe that we have in place for this school year.
This is on page five of the handouts that you have, if you want to follow along before you.
All right, as you can see from this slide, we have come a long way in our efforts to improve student achievement. We will continue with our efforts in the areas of algebra, geometry, and Algebra II. But once again, just want to highlight, these are percentage points of growth in each of those areas from the previous school year till last school year. All right, on this side, it shows reporting categories and the corresponding scale score. A scale score of 30 is considered to be proficient. And as a result, we will continue our efforts to improve in expressions and operations, equations and inequalities, functions and statistics, reasoning, lines and transformation, triangles, and expressions and operations. All right, this next slide highlights some of the items that are within our school improvement plan, the first being professional development. First of all, we have adopted a series called the 10-Minute End Service, and this is a, a series in which it guides our professional conversations throughout our content meetings. And so as we see an area of focus for a group, for example, let's say classroom management, then we can refer to this resource and have a conversation about ways that teachers are, things that teachers are doing within their classroom to work in this area. Also, within our professional development, I want to highlight the assistance that we are receiving from the Department of Education. This is a collaborative effort in which we are provided feedback on our written, taught, and tested items. So I'm going to start with that first one, written, taught, and tested. It was mentioned earlier, but this is the process by which the administrative team provides feedback to teachers on their lesson plans. During this evaluation process, we ensure that the lesson plan matches the level of rigor that will be required of our students. Next, the administrator will observe the lesson that relates to the lesson plan that was just evaluated. The administrator, once again, provides feedback to the teacher on the delivery and effectiveness of that lesson. Finally, the assessment that relates to the lesson is evaluated to ensure the proper, appropriate level of rigor. Intervention identification, the leadership team uses a, a process, including ongoing conversations with teachers, parents, and students, and observation of various data points in an effort to identify all students at risk of failing or in need of targeted interventions. Then, the next one is the tiered interventions. This is the process by which those identified students are provided with a specific intervention. For example, a student who is a attendant, who is an attendance concern, may be assigned a mentor, and an attendance contract will be developed. However, another student who may struggle in math will be provided with a content-specific study hall that I will describe on the next slide. Finally, our school improvement plan addresses how we will monitor the progress of each of these interventions described above. All right, so on this slide, which is the final slide that I will share today, this is the things that we are doing this year at Kings Fork High School that we believe are going to have a big impact on our student achievement. First is a common planning period. Our mathematics department has a common planning period, and during this time, teachers are allowed to meet and plan daily. The administrative team and division content specialists often participate in these professional conversations to ensure that student, student learning is the center of discussions. In addition, the division content specialists have used this time to provide additional professional development in the area of mathematics centered around the targeted reporting categories and also to share teaching strategies. Assessment review is another area where the teachers, the administrative team, and the division math specialists work to ensure that students are exposed to high-quality assessments. Our teams, our teachers submit their assessments at least one week prior to administering them to students, and as a, as a group, we provide feedback and, and inform them on areas in which they may want to address some of the questions to make sure, as stated, it shows the appropriate level of rigor. Work release and content-specific study halls, this is a new effort to help, to help students when we have access to them. In the past, students did not always take advantage of our after-school assistance, especially if we had granted work release. This year, a student who requests a study hall or a work release, I look at the student's record and determine if they have met all of, all of the, the requirements for graduation. If they are falling short of a particular, passing a particular test, then I will assign them to one of these content-specific study halls in which it is run by an expert in the area of weakness. The teacher is there to answer questions on homework and provide remediation on an individual need. And there's a built-in incentive program there, because at the moment the student passes the SOL test, in this case, which is given throughout the school year, their work release will then be granted. The next one, PBIS, which stands for Positive Behavior Intervention Strategies, is a, this is a program that seeks to pair students with a personalized mentor. These students are selected based on academic or behavioral needs. Student success plans are then developed with these mentors. Success, success plans are designed to identify the area of need, to create goals for success, to provide support, and to monitor student progress. A contract with the student's success plan will be developed that outlines the student and mentor responsibilities, which will lead to behavior modification and completion of goals. In addition, our team of PBIS mentors visits in-school suspension daily to deliver lessons aimed at teaching positive behaviors as reflected on our PBIS matrix. And this concludes my portion here. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer at this time.
Questions concerned or comments by board members? Dr. Bird, I'm proud of what you've started at Kings Fork. I really appreciate the situation that you took under hand last year to improve the math scores, specifically the bulldog period that you used to bring all the students that were having trouble in math to a common area where math instructors were there to help them out, and also the extra help you got from people in the community that were math teachers before. And if you ever should need any money to continue that, please let us know, we'd be glad to help you out there. I think that showed a great improvement in what we could do. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have the principal, next we'll have the principal of Lakeland High School, Dr., Mr. Doug Dewey. Even the doctor, almost. Doug Wagner. Really messed that one up. I apologize, Mr. Wagner.
Good evening, Dr. Dubrasky, Vice Chair Copeland, members of the board, Dr. Whitney. My name is Doug Wagner, and I'm here this evening from Lakeland High School to present to you our plans for continued mathematics improvement. The slide that you see right now shows data for our math, science, social studies, English, and graduation index. We are pleased to show increases not only in math, but in science and social studies as well, and we have efforts well underway to address the declines that you see in our English and our graduation index. The next slide here, and the table focuses on the three areas of mathematics. The gains seen here are fueling our expectations for the coming year. In Algebra I, the increase of five points represents a 10.2% increase over the prior year. In geometry, the eight-point increase represents a gain of 17%. And for Algebra II, the 12-point increase represents a gain of 32.4% over the 2012-13 school year. Whenever we begin to analyze our SOL data, one of the first things that we look at is some of the information that's here before you now. The categorical data shows us how we did in each of the reporting areas for each of the, the three parts of math, Algebra I, geometry, and Algebra II. The numbers that you are looking at are mean scaled scores. The range of the mean scaled scores is 0 to 50, with 30 being somewhat of a magic number, as, as Dr. Bird had mentioned. Numbers that are below 30 are indicative of areas where we need to have more work, while areas above 30 may represent an area of strength. As you see, our numbers in geometry and algebra are bombing all around that magical 30 number. But in Algebra I, we didn't quite make it to 30. But there's yet another strategy that's embedded into these reporting categories, and that is the use of student performance by question data. With that type of information, what we can look at, just as an example, we could look into equations and inequalities under Algebra I, that's our lowest reporting category, and we could take a look at specific question types. And in doing so, we may find out that there are certain question types for which student's success rate was only 10% in answering the question correctly, while in the same category, other question types could be answered at a 70, 80% success rate. So by having that information, we can focus a lot more clearly on the specific types of questions that have caused students to have problems. Aside from identifying which data to focus on, we are also taking these listed actions to, to secure further gains in our math performance. First off, students with disabilities have been noted to not be increasing at the same rate as our other subgroups. To remedy this, we have initiated efforts to have inclusion teachers be required, actually, to attend common planning with their cooperating math teachers. In addition, skill support teachers will be fully focused on skills identified as weaknesses by the classroom mathematics teachers. The next item, monitoring of common planning, is not totally new. What is new for Lakeland is that we have all of our math teachers with common planning at the exact same time. This allows them to plan by their content vertically or individually. We are monitoring the common planning by receiving minutes from the members of the math department, and also by sitting in either as administrators alone, together, or with central office assistants. And we are doing so to confirm the use of the curriculum framework, as well as making sure that things are aligned. At Lakeland High School, all of our plans are submitted via the Google Drive. An administrator can go to the Google Drive at any time, pull up a math teacher's lesson plan, make comments, leave feedback, and then, on the day that the lesson is to be implemented, attend the class, make sure that the lesson plans have been changed according to instruction, and then also review how that lesson has been implemented. Considering the significance of the proper alignment of planning, instruction, and assessment with state standards, professional development activities for teachers and administrators have been and will continue to be offered. During the pre-service on August 28th of this school year, professional development was offered by our math supervisor. And in fact, at Lakeland, all of the supervisors for all four core areas visited and provided professional development on writing objectives in accord with the Department of Education guidelines. They also helped us in aligning plans and assessment to the required content and cognitive level. Currently, I'm attending a training called Aligning Academic Review and Performance Evaluation. The purpose of this training is to strengthen alignment between performance standards, teacher planning, and administrative observations, as well as to enhance the feedback skills of, of building leaders. In November, we will take further advantage of Department of Education offerings and resources by having one of their specialists who will come to Lakeland and observe classes with me. This specialist will help me look for areas of weakness in the actual instructional program, and will also help me to provide feedback for the teachers that is specific, that's based on data, and that is designed to promote teacher improvement. Lastly, on this slide, you see MAP data, Measures of Academic Performance, and this has been used in helping us to develop class consistencies that are beneficial to the students. Also, MAP data, along with formative data, is guiding a lot of what happens in our mathematics laboratory classes by allowing teachers to focus in on very specific remedial efforts that are that are needed to carry on the regular coursework. SOL results are not exclusively the result of students taking the test for the first time. Therefore, our efforts to prepare students for retakes are also very significant. We are focusing right now on working with students who have requested work release and making sure that they have been assigned to remedial opportunities where they work with staff members in the math department. We are continuing, of course, with our after-school and our pull-out remediation efforts. Finally, a part of generating success in the school will come from developing the culture to be one in which excellence in academics, athletics, and character are the norm. We are continuing this focus this year with the initiation of our Cavalier Character Development Program. In this program, we teach, promote, and involve students in learning and living the traits of a cavalier. We will find success in this effort as it will be done within the context of our continuing to build positive, caring relationships among all members of the Cavalier family. That concludes my presentation.
Questions, comments, or concerns by Dr. Wagner, or for Mr. Wagner, I'm sorry.
Hello, Mr. Wagner. I realize that you're dealing with not only content, but a new style of testing. But realistically, how long do you think it will take you in the areas of Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II to reach that passing mark of 70?
Realistically, our expectation is to do it this year. Because if we can continue to monitor the alignment, I think alignment is going to be key because we've seen some time that we can recoup from things where maybe some time was spent in class covering things that seem to be part of what was designed by the state but may not truly have been a part of that curriculum framework. I'm going to say that we can do it this year, and I think that that's realistic.
Thank you.
I think by advocating the character situation, I think that'll go a long ways as well. How about the discipline? Did you address in a phase of the discipline that perhaps could be added with character?
There's a number of phases of discipline. We have some, we do have some limited PBISs, Dr. Byrd spoke to, but we also have initiated several different mentoring programs. Assistant Principal Ms. Paul has gone out and actually worked with some community, different community groups, and has received from grants from them to further provide incentive-type programs for students in terms of behavior and performance. So yes, it's widespread, and there's a number of different things that we look at, primarily focusing on some one-on-one situations through mentoring.
Mr. Wagner, I'd like to commend you on the improved our math test scores. I know it was not just by happenstance because I visited your school and saw the review you were doing with three teachers in the classroom at the same time, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Could you tell us a little more about that?
You're referencing in part one of our programs, which is flooding in the math department. We have teachers in the math department instead, when they're on their duty block, their duty becomes to assist other teachers in the classroom so that the teacher can perhaps be more effective with their efforts to differentiate instruction. I believe the class you saw was a special education inclusion class that had the regular classroom teacher, the special ed inclusion teacher, and a flooding teacher all present at the same time. And if I remember correctly, the teacher was doing some very good charting and monitoring using some formative assessment so that she could see exactly who needed to go where, and she did show some results last year.
They did a good job at it, too. Commend them for us, okay? Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
Thank you.
And last, we have the principal of King's Fork Middle School, Mrs. Jennifer Preston, to share with you her efforts for obtaining full accreditation. Ms. Preston?
Good evening, Chairman Dubrinsky, members of the school board, Dr. Whitney, and our viewing audience. I'm Mrs. Preston, the principal at King's Fork Middle School, and I'm happy to be with you tonight to share our school improvement strategies. For the current school year, we are, our accreditation status is accredited with warning in the area of English and History. And these are our comparative scores from the last two school years, with we did indicate a growth in math, but we actually did have some regression by a few percentage points in our other subject areas. Specifically for our two areas of warning, English and History, this is our breakout by grade level. Each of our grade levels do complete a state test in the area of reading, and then, of course, our eighth graders do take the writing test, which is a test of cumulative skills across sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And our accreditation rating is based on all of those subject areas combined under English, both reading and writing. And then our history scores last school year were based on the History VI test and the Civics and Economics test given in grade VII. Of course, we fell short of the English benchmark of 75% and the history benchmark of 70%. As we've analyzed our data, we looked specifically to reporting categories to identify our areas of focus. The following areas have been designated for improvement. And for our reporting category in reading, this year it was the same at all three grade levels, and that would be the demonstration of comprehension of nonfiction text. The Writing VIII reporting category, research, plan, compose, and revise for a variety of purposes. And with the Civics and Economics VII, political and governmental processes and the economic principles and decisions. And again, the reporting category data, as previously mentioned, are displayed as scaled scores, and again, the scaled score of 30 indicates proficiency in a reporting category. So this data shows us our weaknesses in instruction, and we also use the student performance by question data, and we're able to adapt our lessons to ensure mastery of specific concepts. At this time, this is a preview of our school-wide strategies to increase student achievement and also teacher capacity. The first one, alignment of curriculum and assessments. Teachers do work in content teams by grade level to unpack the standards of learning taught each nine weeks. They complete a process to identify the cognitive or the thinking level of each standard, develop instructional activities at or above that cognitive level, and then ensure that all assessments are aligned in content and cognition. We actually started this process last school year and have found it very beneficial in improving our instruction as teachers developed a deeper understanding of the curriculum and in some instances found that students were not taught and assessed at the cognitive level assessed on the SOL test. Additionally, alignment feedback is provided to teachers, and it's determined by evaluating or collecting observation data, also comparing their lesson plan, reviewing that, and the assessment that goes with the lesson observed. And that is a face-to-face conference that I hold with the English teachers. Another strategy that we use at King's Fork Middle School is that students track or chart their mastery progress. We always are on the lookout at middle school level to seek opportunities for students to develop an ownership in the learning process. So not only do our teachers collect, analyze, and discuss data, but our students also track or chart their mastery progress. Administrative team visits classes during the first quarter to discuss our promotion policy and set the standard for mastery. And after completion of common assessments, students track or chart their mastery of objectives. Additionally, English and math teachers set growth goals with students using the measures of academic progress or MAP test data, which students complete at the beginning, middle, and end of the school year. Another initiative that we're using at King's Fork Middle is Whole Brain Teaching, and this came about after the administrators completed reading the book Whole Brain Teaching for Challenging Kids this summer, and about a dozen of our teachers attended a two-day training. At that time, we decided to adopt five school-wide rules and five school-wide teaching techniques. Faculty members are currently working on an ongoing book read of Whole Brain Teaching for Challenging Kids to increase student engagement and to foster a strong sense of school community. And what we've seen so far is the consistency across grade levels and subjects has instilled a stronger sense of school community, increased student engagement, and it really does complement our Positive Behavior Intervention and Support Program. Another school-wide focus has been reading intervention. What we've tried to do is switch from reading remediation and waiting to help students after they have been unsuccessful to intervening. So we've set up targeted small group intervention, and that will start next week in all English classes, and teachers will use the data from the MAP testing to identify students in need of intervention. Teachers may either develop lessons that target specific reading deficiencies or use a program called Sword of Success, which provides lessons that target reading fluency, comprehension, and vocabulary development, and this program uses high-interest books. It's not a worksheet-based program, it's not a computer-based program, it's actual literature. Many of the titles are nonfiction, and that's a plus because students need that additional practice in that area, is a noted area of deficiency. Last year, two teachers on each grade level piloted this program, and through the support of the special ed department, an additional kit per grade level has been purchased, which allows us to expand the program this year. So having these additional materials allow, will allow us to serve twice as many students with Sword of Success, which is specifically designed for students that are not reading on grade level. Next, we're working to provide effective feedback to our students. We have completed professional development with all teachers around the concept of providing feedback to students that is not only corrective but provides feedback on the learning process. So for example, corrective feedback would simply indicate a response is incorrect, where process feedback uncovers where the student became off track in developing a response. So specifically with our English teachers, they have participated in recent trainings delivered by our division's English specialist, I'm sorry, English supervisor, in providing effective feedback during the writing process, as well as using the division's rubrics for scoring. Our last one on this side, our professional development initiatives also include, from the administrative team, two of us have participated in the College of William &amp; Mary's CERN Principals Academy, in which increasing student engagement has been the focus over the course of the last three school years. And then all of the administrators collect student engagement data while observing classes, and we use this data to develop professional development sessions for our faculty. Presenters, as we engage our teachers, we do model high-yield strategies such as cooperative learning, problem-solving, using effective techniques, questioning techniques, and also literacy strategies during our in-services. So we're not only teaching our students the strategies, but we are modeling them for And just in closing, to share a few subject-specific strategies, we are really focusing in reading, becoming better at our craft, and this is by a real focus on before and during reading strategies. Sometimes the focus of reading comprehension shifts to what students can answer or complete after they've read a text, and at that point, we've really missed a valuable opportunity to create meaning, because meaning is constructed before and while students read. So common literacy strategies to incorporate across all subjects to improve comprehension have been selected by the English teachers, and professional development has been provided, and these strategies have been modeled for the faculty as well. Strategies of focus include anticipation guides, interacting with the text, and analyzing question-answer relationships. And in fact, yesterday afternoon, as we were engaged in our book read for professional development, we worked literacy strategies through our session. Another strategy, conferencing with students, and this is to provide specific feedback during the writing process. We have not seen the growth in writing as we hope to have, so we have really changed the way that we're providing feedback. And our English teachers are shifting from relying more on written feedback during the process or on the final copy of the paper to providing feedback to individual students or small groups of students as they work through the writing process, with the hopes that they're practicing the skills to have a better final product. And then lastly, to increase student engagement, some examples there, civics and economics teachers are working to incorporate newspaper articles, political cartoons, and editorials to connect the relevance of the curriculum to real life. And what we're trying to focus on will be simulations, because we feel like getting the students engaged and involved will help them understand the difficult concepts, such as explaining the role of government in different situations, explaining the legislative process, or even understanding the importance of the US currency, to get them involved in simulations that involve them in those larger concepts. And in closing, I know through the diligent work of the faculty, King's Fork Middle School, along with my administrative team who's present tonight, and with the support from our instructional department, we will see growth to earn full accreditation.
Could you have them stand up, please?
Yes. Mr. Smith, Mrs. Dildy, and Mrs. Gray. And at this time, are there any questions?
Questions concerning or comments by board members? If none, I'd like to express my gratitude for the work you've done, and I know that you're going to be successful in the future. You're hard-working and administrative, and we appreciate everything you've done here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Dubrinsky.
Before we go on, I will say this. You probably noticed some common threads as you heard each of the principals present. Monitoring is going to be increased as far as making certain that we're monitoring what's being expected of teachers, what's been expected of principals, central offices as well. You also heard a lot about the written, taught, and tested curriculum. And I know sometimes it's said very quickly, and one may think, what exactly are we referring to? But making certain that that written curriculum is what's taught, and also making sure that what's taught is what's actually being tested as well. And you also heard about tiered intervention, making certain that as we see students are in need of an intervention, that we're providing that based on those needs and quality feedback, making sure that we're providing that quality feedback as far as the central office support going in, providing feedback for principals, but also that principals providing teachers that quality feedback after observing or looking at their data. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
I'd like all board members to look at the concerned agenda and see if anything needs to be moved to new business at this time, please. So please let us know what your wishes are.
Goal number one and number two with the appropriate objectives that we had for last year. On the right-hand side, we have those same goals, but what we have, what I am proposing is that we change the objectives. Specifically, as you look at goal number one, to improve student achievement and close academic achievement gaps. Quite naturally, the first goal, our objective, is to increase the number of schools fully accredited. The second objective is to increase the number of students meeting the English Standards of Learning benchmark. The third objective is to increase the number of students meeting the math Standards of Learning benchmark. And the fourth objective under this first goal is to ensure that all high schools continue to meet or exceed the Virginia Department of Education's Graduation Completion Index, or GCI, rate of 85%. For the second goal, it's to provide a safe and nurturing environment. We have three objectives, and not all of those have changed. As far as the first one, provide quality facilities by ensuring all schools complete and submit the monthly custodial checklist report and address concerns as needed. The second objective is to promote appropriate behavior by increasing the number of positive behavior modification activities at each school and by decreasing out-of-school suspension. And the third objective under this goal is to decrease the dropout rate from the previous On pages 21 and 22, we have goals number three, four, and five. Goal number three, the objective remains the same, to meet goals and objectives of the division-wide comprehensive plan and school improvement plans for 2014-2015. As you know, that's a working document, and one of the things that we do is we revisit it throughout the year and make adjustments as necessary. Goal number four is to advance academic achievement through enhanced instructional skills gained by professional development. The first one talks about providing relevant professional development opportunities that focus on rigor as determined by increased academic performance in the following content areas, and that's all four content areas: English, math, science, and history. And also to provide relevant professional development opportunities that focus on differentiated instruction in those same content areas. The fifth and final goal remains the same, strengthen collaboration and stakeholders and increase parent and community satisfaction. The first objective is to promote family-school partnerships by providing more opportunities for parent involvement, education, volunteering, and input. That remains the same as last year. The second objective is new. I am proposing that we include developing a consistent, systematic approach to surveying various stakeholders to measure satisfaction. We've done many surveys over the years, but we've not developed a systematic approach to that. I would propose that we survey parents every other year, or perhaps different stakeholders every other year, so that we can compare that data, or perhaps each year. These are the objectives that I've come up with. These are the objectives that I've come up with, staff and I have come up with, that are aligned with your goals at this time. Obviously, it's open to any suggestions or any modifications or additions that we might want to add.
Suggestions, questions concerning by board members? Take a few minutes to look at it. Do we have to approve at this meeting? I'm sorry. Then we can approve at the next, approve and we're not approved at the next meeting, okay? Okay? Good. Okay. Yes. Okay.
Are these different from what we worked on this summer at the work session? I know the additions that you made are different, but these are what we worked on this summer during the work session.
Yes, we talked, some of them you talked about and I've kind of formulated them into these particular objectives, yes. During the retreat, you mentioned much of this, right?
If that's the case, we'll go ahead and table that then until the next meeting.
All right, we'll bring it back to you. We'll bring it back before you and the November meeting then.
I know that objectives don't include methods, but I was just wondering if this goal number five under objectives, if the wording could be a little more specific about increasing volunteerism or, I mean, it's just kind of mentioned there, we pass it, but I still think that a program for volunteerism would be an asset to improving SOL scores.
We can certainly include that. And if it doesn't fit as an amesurable objective, we can certainly include it as a specific strategy tied with one of the objectives.
Yeah, that's why I said, I thought it might be a strategy. Okay. Thank you.
We're at unfinished business at this time. Objectives for school board, we said that new business, capital improvement plan.
Yes. Each year, you prepare a capital improvement plan that we present to the city. Staff and I have worked on a suggested capital improvement plan to address the needs of our school division as far as capital improvements are concerned. I'm going to call to the podium, Mr. Terry Napier, our Director of Plant and Facilities. Mr. Napier.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As Dr. Whitney mentioned, we come to you every year with a proposed capital improvement plan for you to consider. Once having done that, you approve it for us and we will submit it to the city or we will make any changes that you deem appropriate.
And this is on page 23, I apologize.
Beginning on page 23 in your booklet. What you will find is a chart, and it looks exactly like last year's chart. What we're going to do is start in the bottom right-hand corner and you will see two sets of numbers, one in black and one in red. The black numbers represent what we are proposing for you and the red numbers represent what the city has indicated that they will fund and when they will fund it in their capital improvement plan. As you can see in the bottom right-hand corner, we are suggesting that you approve approximately $241.7 million worth of projects. In the last capital improvement plan put out by the city, they recommended 230.8. So there is some discrepancy there, but some of the discrepancies in that number come from our calculated costs versus their calculated costs and they aren't always the same. So there will be a little deviation there. If you move back up the chart to the left-hand top corner, beginning with number one, and we're going to focus, just for your information, on the first five years of this plan because it is a 10-year plan running from 1516 through 2425. The out years, which would be the last five years, we have listed the projects, but the costs associated with those out years are, quite frankly, our best guess. We have no way to know at this point in time what those costs will be, so we're going to focus on years one through five. So beginning with item one, HVAC replacement and chiller replacement. This was in last year's capital improvement plan that we submitted to you. You approved it. The city did not appropriate any monies for those projects. We are going to put it back in again this year because we think it's important that it be in there. We have been told that HVAC replacement is not a capital improvement. We are in disagreement with that. So Dr. Whitney, myself, and Ms. Forsman, we will make our case to the city again for that, but it is included for a total of $9.1 million over the course of the next five years.
If I can speak to that, I think it's, what's most important about that is the fact that we want it documented that it's a need for a specific item. While obviously, we know that funding is provided by the city, but we want to have it documented that this is the rationale for asking for this particular amount for this purpose.
Any questions about item number one? Ms. Bouchard.
Okay. Where, where are, I know that John, are there others that you're thinking?
Yes, there are a number of them. And if you look, I believe it's in your booklet, pages 25 through, help me, Dr. Whitney.
Okay, I see where you're talking about.
Yeah, the rationales for each of these items are on separate sheets behind that chart.
Yeah, I see.
And all of those schools are listed. But yes, John F. Kennedy is one. There are a number of them. All of our rooftop schools, with the exception of John Yates Middle School, are on that list. We have chiller plants and chillers at Lakeland High School and Nansman River High School that we would like to replace. So it's just shy of $10 million worth of HVAC equipment at this point that we feel needs to be replaced now.
Okay. Thank you.
Question, Mr. Napier. Regarding the second part of this, I guess the land purchase for the other campus site for the northern end of the city.
Yes, ma'am.
What do we have any, I see two zeros. What, have we made any progress? Do we have that already? Is it, am I understanding?
They have appropriated the funds. We have not selected sites yet. Dr. Whitney and I and Ms. Forsman have had a number of conversations with city staff regarding, you know, we talked about a multi-campus site at one point and then we talked about separate sites. We're kind of going back and forth on that and we are exploring options with the city as to what we may be able to do as far as sites for both the middle school, which is listed next, and the new elementary school, which is listed below that. So we are having those conversations. We haven't committed to anything yet, but there's a number of things that are being looked at.
So we're basically in the process of exploring the best location and the, a location that is available at this time with the city.
Okay. I'm not trying to hurry you, but we opened John Yates with quite a few extra students. We opened Northern Shores with quite a few extra students as usual. And so my question is.
And Creekside as well. About 200 of them.
Absolutely. And so with those, with the northern end of the city and the growth that's there, is there a possibility that we can have some conversations with the appropriate officials about zoning the new construction, especially new residential construction in those areas without considering the infrastructure, schools, and other supports for those areas?
Dr. Whitney and I can certainly bring that up in our meetings, but we have zero control over who gets building permits and who does not. What we do know is whatever permits have been issued for, say, the next three, four, possibly even five years, if they go out that far, we will have information relating to that. What we don't know is how many students are going to come out of those neighborhoods when those houses do get built. So there is a pipeline of construction that the city is aware of. They will share that information with us, but that really doesn't help us with existing schools.
One of the things that we do, in fact, it's already scheduled, we have a capital improvement meeting with the city. And during that time, we go over this plan and we talk about the needs and we also bring numbers to say where we are as far as how many students at each of our buildings and what the capacity is, how, talk about the overage as well, to kind of present the need and why this is, this is a request and the importance of trying to make it happen as soon as possible.
I think one of the things that maybe some of the people don't understand is with the overcrowding, that really puts our scheduling in the classrooms and lunches and everything else at a great disadvantage because we may have students that may have breakfast and then they come to school and they have lunch at 10:30 or some may have lunch at 1:30 just because our internal facilities will not accommodate them.
Right. Our core, the core components of all of our facilities, when we get to situations such as John Yates and Creekside especially, those core facilities get taxed to a point, it's not just cafeteria, which is pretty crazy in and of itself, but it's restrooms, it's those kinds of things that all become taxed to a point where it becomes very inefficient. And we're aware of that, but there's just not a whole lot we or the staff at the building can do about that until we get some of these buildings built that we're asking for.
I think it would be beneficial to invite the council members one at a time to tour John Yates, either during class changes or maybe when there's a tornado and the kids have to come into the building from the 22 mobile units.
Yes, ma'am. We can do that.
Great answer. Thank you. That was quick, too. Any other questions concerning the board members?
All right. Want to continue? Go ahead.
Moving down the list, there is a item number two. We actually, that's item number two, the second item, the campus site, we didn't list that as an item per se. It's a purchase. The new middle school, as you can see to the right, city council did appropriate half a million dollars to that project in the last capital improvement plan. What we are asking them to do in the next two years is appropriate $22.8 million in each of those two years so that we can contract that work, beginning with A and E in the 1617 school year, and then open that building in the 1819 school year. If you look just below that in the red numbers, what you see are the city's proposed numbers, the 500 or half a million, those match. What they want to do next year is 2.5 million and then 21.2 million in the following two years. But here's the problem with that, just so you're aware. We are not going to be able to enter into a contract with any building contractor unless we have those funds available to pay that contractor. So with it being spread out the way it is over the course of four years, we actually could not enter into a contract until 1718, which is actually going to put us somewhere in 1920, opening that school, and that's unacceptable to us.
Is our city counterpart didn't aware of that?
They will be as soon as we meet with them on the 21st.
Okay, thank you.
So that's why those numbers are spread out there differently. Next is hazardous materials management. This is the $75,000 a year that the city appropriates to us for asbestos abatement and various other situations that may occur that require us to do hazardous materials Following that is the new Northern Elementary School. What we are proposing with that in fiscal year 1516, which is coming up, $1 million. And then in 1718, the remainder of that, which will be 28.8 million. What we would like to do is get that school under construction and open it in the fall of 2019. If we do that, as you can see, it's a 1,000-pupil elementary school, which is a little bit bigger than what we've proposed in the past, but we have looked at that and we have decided that if we can build a 1,000-student elementary school and we feel like we can manage it if the, if the building is built for it, that will allow us to do three things. Close Florence Bowser, close Driver, move those two populations into the new building, and rezone Creekside zone to pull out approximately 200 to 250 students into that new building, which would get them back down to their capacity of 800. So as you can see, the numbers aren't that far off from what the city proposed. What's off is the timeframe. They're proposing giving us that money in 1920, which means it would be somewhere around 2021, 22, before we could open that elementary school. And by that time, with the construction going on, I suspect Creekside would be at 15, 1600 students.
And when we develop this, obviously, we're developing it based on needs and based on numbers. When you look at the date of the 1718 date of possible opening or 1819, that's not ideal. But we realize that it can only be so fast. But again, we have to base it on the numbers and the population that's there. So it's a matter of what we need and trying to present it as such.
Keep in mind that for us to build an elementary school takes about two years from design to completed construction, that's about a two-year timeframe. Middle school, it's a little bit longer. So that's why you see these numbers laid out the way they are.
May I ask a question with regard to the elementary school?
Yes, ma'am.
How much relief will that give Northern Shores, which has fifth grade in the trailer city behind it?
Well, that would be something that we would have to look at as far as rezoning.
If we put, when we put another elementary school in the northern end, we will have to go through rezoning in the northern end to address all of that, yes.
And yeah, Northern Shores has six mobile units, Creekside has seven, John Yates has 17.
Right.
So yeah, to say these schools aren't overcrowded, which we have actually heard in the past, you know, just count the mobile units. Any questions about the new elementary school? Number five on the list, the operations facility. This is the same as was in the plan last year. What we are proposing at this time, until we have something offered up to us that's a better deal than this, we are still going with the idea that we could take the Mount Zion property, we can renovate it, and we can put the operations facility to include textbooks, print shop, food services, all of those departments could be moved to that site. It has been indicated to us that that would not be something that would be funded for various reasons, but nothing has been offered to us in its place, so we are leaving it in there because we do have that property. We would like to do that with it, and nothing else has been brought forth to us.
Did not the city agree to do something with us concerning that, that type of situation there?
What was shared with me at the last time we spoke about this is that looking for property that would meet our needs in exchange for the Mount Zion property, but as was indicated, we have not moved forward with that. They have not. We have not been offered anything as shared, right? Our goal is to try to have a facility that can meet our needs, whether it's the Mount Zion area or somewhere else.
Yeah, I think we're tied to the Mount Zion area as long as the building and facilities that they offer are credible and realistic building.
And what we have put in there is $9.2 million. We have asked for that in this funding year. If you look to your right, the city's proposal is $9 million in the year 2020. So there's quite a discrepancy there, too. And given that's my building, I'd really like to get out of it. It just doesn't serve our purpose. I'm not going to go on about that. Item number six, John F. Kennedy Middle School renovation, 1.5 million in 1718, 18 million in 1819, with the renovation portion of that opening approximately the fall of 2020. As you can see, again, the city's numbers, while they match as far as value, they're three years apart from what our numbers are. Florence Bowser and Driver close in approximately 1718 or whenever the new elementary school opens.
And as far as the remaining of this, traditionally, we will, obviously, you can take a look at it or if you have questions, but because it's so far out as far as the completion date, it's very rough as far as what our needs are, but we know our needs may very well change as the years progress.
And the costs are.
Yes, absolutely.
Like I said, it's our best guess at this point, given what we know now. So that, all of those added together, 241.7 million that we are proposing to send send to the city.
Any questions, concerns, board members' comments? Thank you.
This is an action item, we do need to present something to the city within the next week or two.
Need a movement?
Yes.
I hope we accept this budget request for capital expenditures.
Board members will please vote.